All right, we're live, so I'm gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, June 3rd, 2019. And if you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on our agenda is manifests.
I will make a motion that we approve the accounts payable manifest of June 3rd, 2019, and the payroll manifest of June 4th, 2019.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor? Chris, did we ever find out what happened to the sound last time?
No, we, uh, everything was running good for weeks. We had a good run, and then nothing's changed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you've got a phone, maybe keep it away from the microphone. But other than that, we don't know what, we don't know what the problem is. We rewired all this.
Yeah, not too long ago.
Two months ago, three months ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, same as last year. Didn't we go six last year?
I don't remember.
All right, next item on the agenda is minutes. We actually have two sets from the 6th and the 20th. I will take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes on May 6th and May 20th?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on those?
Nope, they were all good.
Were there any?
There was one minor amendment on the 20th. Mister to a miz or a miz to a mister.
Just a grammatical correction, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? unanimous? All right, action items from last meeting. So last meeting, we discussed board priorities for the year ahead, and two that we had wanted to focus on in more detail was the emergency lane and road issues and developing the Route 4 property.
There were three though, right? Weren't there three in total?
In total, yeah, but those were the two that we had picked to be a little more detailed about.
Yep. So I took the action item to write a scope statement for the roads, and I sent that to you guys this afternoon, late, like 4:30, but I did draft it.
Do you want to read them over?
Yeah, I'll read it now, but it's in your email too, if you want to kind of be able to absorb it. So, you know, we talked about the roads, so the draft scope is examine the current state of Nottingham roads in an effort to improve planning and budgeting. It probably needs like a service or something in there, too. This should include reviewing and updating the current emergency lane policy in a manner that is both responsible and fair, reviewing the final road surface management study, and working with the public works director and town administrator, identifying any necessary changes in practice, identify the metrics and KPIs the board would like to receive from the public works director. And this, you know, just a side note is that this relates to all of the questions we get at town meeting that we haven't been able to answer because we don't have the data, and I don't know what those are yet, but I think we need to talk about what those are, and then ensuring that the public works CIP is up to date.
Any thoughts on that?
It's pretty straightforward, huh?
Yep.
Would you say that public works is what up to date?
CIP.
CIP.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess as I'm reading this, the only change that I would suggest is that, I'll edit myself, excuse it, in the first line say, examine the current state of Nottingham roads in an effort to improve planning and budgeting. Just throw the operations word in there.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, and I can send this to you, Lorraine.
Actually, I think she did get it.
Oh, you were on that email, so yeah, just put planning, budgeting, and operations. So and again, this isn't, this isn't an attempt in my mind to tell the public works director how he should be doing his job, but just to make sure that, you know, he and the board are in sync, that we understand all of the needs of the department and how we can best support it.
Yeah. At first glance, I was, I was a little uncertain of using the phrase responsible and fair, but then reading it again and realizing, this isn't a list of requirements, it's basically a statement of principle.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think it goes without saying that that's, that's a, that's important to all of us.
Yeah, and I mean, it covers both sides of the argument, right?
Right, right. So, I mean, it is subjective, but like I said, it's not a.
Yeah, it wasn't intended, yeah, it wasn't intended that way.
Right. So I'm, I'm good with that. Anyone else, comments?
Good.
Good. Fair with it? Okay. So, that's gonna be a tough one to follow. I only wrote a single, just longer sentence to encompass the Route 4 property, basically to explore and evaluate opportunities to develop the property and create additional revenue streams for the town beyond property taxes. Now, we, you know, we have had some, one presentation so far from an outfit looking to develop the property, but again, the, you know, the clock hasn't finished ticking down on the, on the repurchase rights on that yet, but that certainly doesn't mean that we can't move ahead looking into other proposals, coming up with an RFP if need be. There's certainly no reason for us not to do our planning and make efforts now towards getting that property developed if that turns out to be the most viable option, so. So that was going, that's what was going through my head.
I think it's okay that it's a simpler statement because it's a simpler, it's a little more straightforward, right?
It is, it is, yeah.
Tony, could you repeat that again?
So regarding the solar development on Route 4, explore and evaluate opportunities to develop the property and create additional revenue streams for the town beyond property taxes. Now, we, you know, we have had some, one presentation so far from an outfit looking to develop the property, but again, the, you know, the clock hasn't finished ticking down on the, on the repurchase rights on that yet, but that certainly doesn't mean that we can't move ahead looking into other proposals, coming up with an RFP if need be. There's certainly no reason for us not to do our planning and make efforts now towards getting that property developed if that turns out to be the most viable option, so. So that was going, that's what was going through my head.
I think it's okay that it's a simpler statement because it's a simpler, it's a little more straightforward, right?
It is, it is, it's, yeah.
Tony, could you repeat that again?
So regarding the solar development on Route 4, explore and evaluate opportunities to develop the property and create additional revenue streams for the town beyond property taxes. Any thoughts on that?
No, that's, another straightforward.
Please. Okay. You guys good with that?
Yep.
Okay. There you have it. Did you get that, Chris? All right.
Yes.
Airplane it.
Yeah, I'll give it to you after. All right, and, oh, the, okay, and just to recap, the three goals that we decided at our last meeting, number one, road issues, number two, town properties, and three was solar project on Route 4.
We should have a scope statement around the town properties.
Yeah.
We should.
Yeah. Because that's a very.
Because what's, what's the end goal, you know, I mean, it's to.
Right. That's a wide spectrum, too, you know, the property and equipment that the, you know, stuff the town owns that we're not really doing much with, so we probably should come up with something. Are you brainstorming, are you brainstorming that right now?
Yeah, to evaluate current properties owned by the town to, in order to make decisions around, you know, like future investments and maintenance investments, or, you know, I mean, I know this is important one for you that you've talked about, so I don't know if you have any thoughts on.
I'm just thinking right now.
Yeah, I know.
What we discussed last time was the word holistic assessment of town properties with a pro and con list of all buildings to determine what needs to be completed.
This should be a priority list of where, which buildings are gonna be up there.
Yeah.
To be, which ones are gonna be, you know, more viable for people to use.
Right, in terms of usefulness.
Right.
Right, for example, the old town hall would be a higher priority than the old fire station.
Right.
Yeah. So Tony, see what you just said about holistic assessment?
Oh, it was right out of the mix.
Yeah, yeah, well, just say it again.
So, perform a holistic assessment of town properties with a pro slash con list of all buildings to determine what needs to be completed.
What needs to be completed?
In terms of, let's see, discussion about buildings in town that are not being used due to disrepair, there will need to be a comprehensive evaluation on what needs to be done to each building, and the repairs would be put on the CIP plan.
But if we did this, to conduct a holistic assessment of town properties, including a pro and con list of all buildings to determine which offer further benefit to the town, and that may mean historical value.
Right.
Whatever, right?
You said, Jordan. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was brought up last time, too, to check and see if any of those are on the historic register or could be.
Yeah.
The school may be, I would imagine.
The what?
The school, the old school there.
Which one's that?
Crossed away, isn't it?
It was on the state registry, but, or tried to be, but it is not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, somebody missed a step when they moved it or something, I don't remember the exact details, but when we did the renovation work on it last year, we figured out that it's not.
Oh, okay.
So I, I mean, I think that's okay if we said to conduct a holistic assessment of town properties, including a pro con list of all buildings to determine which offer further benefit to the town or future benefit to the town.
Or continued benefit.
Yeah, continued, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get a list of all the town properties for us to actually do a little brainstorming before the next meeting, to have an idea of what in our own minds are gonna be a priority, so we at least maybe start there as saying, okay, as a group here, do we think that that building over there is probably more viable as our number one thing to look into? You know, and then use it that way there, I mean, we can evaluate all the properties and do all that, but that's a lot of time and effort that's gonna be put in, you know, especially if it's something that's number five on the list that we probably don't have to really intend to get to because it's so low on the bottom, you know. I think we should just probably get to all the town properties that we think we need and then make a, you know, a top two or whatever, and say, okay, find out what these need in order to become viable as, you know, usable properties for the town, instead of going to everything.
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, there can't be that many.
Well, there are, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not parcels, not land.
Structures, right, yeah.
Facilities, yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you get that, Lorraine?
I think so.
Okay. I do think it's a good change to say town structures instead of town properties because we're not talking about the little parcels that we, yeah, exactly, yeah.
How does that sound? Thoughts, comments?
Yeah.
To conduct a holistic assessment of town structures with a pro con list of all the things to determine which offer, which offer needs to benefit to the town.
Sound good? You like it?
Yep.
Like it, like it, like it? I like it.
You like it.
All right. Sold.
So I'm assuming, Tony, from here out, you'll work with Chris to schedule when we're talking about these topics on different meeting agendas.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I knew, I was right in tune with you.
All right, anything else on that before we move on? No? Okay. All right, that takes care of our action items. Next item on the agenda, reports from assigned boards and committees. Planning?
They didn't have a meeting on the 22nd, we have a meeting next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay. And budget, still not budget season yet?
No.
Are they gonna meet soon to review the?
I haven't heard, I'll reach out, see what the mindset is, see where they're at.
Okay. I know they usually do that early summer.
Yeah.
They do just a catch-up meeting. Is Miska still the chair?
No.
No?
No, he's not on the board anymore.
Oh, wow, okay.
It was Mike, well, Mike was temporary, right?
Yeah. But I missed the last meeting, I believe you were there on the last one, weren't you done?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything? Tomorrow, tomorrow? Yeah. And Marston?
Yeah, so we, you know, Chris, having been empowered by the board, went ahead and signed the contract with Ted Bantus, and we are looking towards being able to start to break ground in August. We're also gonna be assembling a team of people interested in helping with fundraising and going after grants, and that's in progress as well.
Cool.
So, how many years later?
Yeah.
We're ready to.
Donna, when was the contract signed?
Ted Bantus.
And how many weeks did they say it would take?
Eight.
Eight, yeah.
Eight?
Yeah.
So August, September, it'll be done before the snow flies.
Yeah, the race is, the race is not snow, it's can you get grass seed in the ground?
Right, right. And that's for the 2021 playing season, right? We'll get there.
Any other boards or committees that I've, I can never remember them all.
300th?
300.
I haven't heard anything.
No.
CIP?
CIP.
Haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Still a little early for that.
Yeah. All right, next item, town administrators' report.
All right, I'm gonna ask you to sign an appointment form for Landon McBride, our new police officer, hoping to get him into the academy for September. Hometown guy. We've got, our other new officer, Chris Alvarez, is in the academy for sure, and we're hoping to get McBride in as well for September because we're thin, so.
Who's his name?
Landon McBride. Yeah, hometown guy, yeah. The top coat went on to Cooper Hill Road last week, finishing off last year's paving of that last gravel section, so that's crossed off our list. Engineering is still underway for Ledge Farm, they were taking core samples last week, and we're now waiting for the engineers to give us their recommendations. We've got decisions to make about our whole overlay and paving operation this year, so as soon as we get that, Sean and I'll dive in, I don't know that we'll be back to you in two weeks with that, it might be four weeks, but we're gonna be racing once we, once we get that to make some decisions on what we do on Ledge Farm is gonna dictate what else we do for our other overlay and road projects for the season, so as soon as we know, we'll let you know, but.
Any surprises?
I haven't heard of any, but we're not gonna know until, you know, until we, until we see what the, what the engineers are gonna do around, around wetlands and the path of the road, that's gonna drive everything.
Yeah.
The worst part is the, is the part closest to us here on that corner, how they suggest we get around that corner is gonna be the money, that's the money spot. The other end is pretty straightforward, so what we need to know is what they think it's gonna cost to do the whole thing, and then we can talk about how we want to break it up and how we want to stage it, because we know we can't afford to do it in one year, so.
Right.
That's, that's the, that's the holdup is, you know, what are the logical ways to break it up in ways that we can afford if we're, we've got kind of two pots of money to work with, one being our shim and seal coat line and the operating budget, and the other being the warrant article for Ledge Farm. The Ledge Farm, warrant articles going to Ledge Farm, we just don't know what the rest of the program is until we know how that, how that Ledge Farm work gets broken up and over how many years and all that, so. In your, in your folders are a couple things, one is a list of some town-owned properties that we don't need to talk about tonight, but I got that ready for you to look at over the next couple of weeks. I had a, actually had somebody inquire about buying a vacant piece of land that the town owns, which prompted me to go back and look at the whole list and say what, what's out there that you might want to consider selling, so I just gave you a preview of that, we'll talk about it in a couple of weeks, but that's what that is. Those are all vacant parcels of land that, some we've tried to sell in the past, others we haven't, so that's coming in a couple of weeks. The other thing in your folder is an envelope with a key fob in it that will get you in the building. We're in kind of shakedown mode now, so don't throw away your keys, but your keys will still work for now, we're gonna make sure everybody's.
Are they out there or there?
Yep, they're in, and there's instructions in there and a little thing, so try those out, let me know if you have any trouble. We will tell you before we change the locks and your keys don't work anymore, that's what that is. And then lastly, we're coming up on, not imminently, but soon, decisions about tax needing on properties with unpaid property taxes. We had, you had talked the last time we went through that about wanting some kind of process or policy about that, and before we get too far into it, I just wanted to throw out to you what, what is it that you're hoping for there? If we can get to a, a policy or a process or a procedure before we actually do it, that would probably be the logical order to do that in, so I wanted to ask what you had in mind for that. The only thing that I can recall from the last discussion was, you know, have we actually been in it or on it, the property, you know, getting, getting eyes inside the property, was the one thing that we've, we haven't always been able to do or haven't always done, but I didn't know if there was anything else that you wanted to be considering in developing a policy or a process or a practice, doesn't need to be formal, it's all what you want.
For how we're gonna deal with people that aren't paying taxes?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've used a rather informal, kind of, the, the general guidelines have been, if there's an owner occupant in it, you haven't been interested in tax needing it, vacant land and seasonal properties have, have risen to the top of that list faster, and there are always variables with all of these things, but that's really the, the only kind of process or.
It's always been like a last resort thing, right?
Yeah, and you can, there, you have a full breadth of, we don't ever want to do it, to, as soon as we're able to do it, we do it. There are towns that do it, you know, as soon as it's legal to do it, if there's any amount owed, they're starting the process. That's, that's one end of the.
So would you be saying, like, just to figure out maybe like a number of like how far they're back, according to like what the value of that property might be?
That's one methodology you could use, you could use a, you know, how is it relative to its assessed value, or how long, how old is the debt, or, it's whatever, whatever.
Something that keeps reoccurring every couple of years, they pay, then they don't pay, or?
Yep, you could build something like that into it, too. I, when we get close to doing it with any of those subject property, I try and fill you in on those kinds of things, but there is no process to it, so if you'd like to set up some guideposts about, you know, once it's been on this list for X number of years or whatever.
Well, we have a couple that have been on there for quite some time, correct?
Yeah, there's, yes, there are several that are, that are there for a very long time, anything that's been there a very long time is, I think, off the top of my head, I think they're all owner occupied. Or there's, there's other factors that would encourage you not to take it, there are times when you don't want a property, you don't want to take ownership of it, and that, you know, those are always gonna be there as well, but.
I know when we discussed this last time, we talked about trying to set up, I don't know if it was Charlene or maybe Donna, you had mentioned something about ensuring that if there happen to be elderly, like granny not getting kicked to the curb, that we're gonna try and find services for this, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that's one thing that's always been probably a positive thing in the past, is being able to use some judgment.
Yeah.
Right, and not being locked into a black and white policy.
Right.
One of the things we talked about last time, too, was having some kind of a line drawn, just so that we don't get in a position of properties perpetually with unpaid taxes.
But we can't, I mean, it's also not fair to do something to one and not the other.
Right, and if we're gonna construct a policy, it's gotta be, it's gotta be objective and equitable, so that way there's no perception of one person getting a break and the other person getting a hammer.
This is where I think maybe the time, like, if they're like five years behind or so, would be more fair than someone that's like, if we reach a certain threshold of a dollar value of the taxes, because obviously, somebody who just saw something here, a mobile home on a piece of property, is not gonna be as valuable as, say, a home that's on a, on a lake.
So let me ask a devil's advocate question, what's the downside of the way that we've been doing it? Because basically, what we've been doing is making a, you know, judgment decision when Chris comes to us with the list, we make, you know, we try to understand what the factors are, and then make a judgment decision based on that, so what's the, and I'm just asking, playing devil's advocate for conversation.
It's, it's a fair question, I.
Well, each situation is gonna be unique. Well, that's, that's where.
That's, yeah, that's kind of my point, right?
Yeah, right.
But at what time do we get the call from Chris and say, hey, we gotta address this property? What's the number? What's the timeframe? You know, that's where I think it would be something that's important for us, then we can make a judgment on it, but there has to be, I think, some sort of, to bring it to our attention so that it doesn't get overblown.
Yeah.
Because then, when it gets overblown, then we're leaving the homeowner, or, you know, the resident or whatever, of that option saying, wow, it's so big now that you, you know, we can't offer them the. know, we can't offer them the buy-back plan or the pay-back plan, because those never catch up."
Yeah, I mean, there's always been that element of intent and effort, right? You know, if there's been good faith on the part of them to try and catch up.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing that I would, you know, you typically get a, for the bigger dollar amount ones. If there's been some payment history, for example, I typically show you that. But it always comes down to a judgment, and your judgment has typically been owner-occupants, we don't do. And you've done that with the luxury of not having any, none of those are, the debt is not approaching the value of the property. So, you know, we're the first in line. If the property sells, which is often how this gets solved, we're gonna be made whole. What you absolutely have to avoid is the amount owed being more than what the property's ever worth, because the town's gonna end up losing in the end in those cases. You've had the luxury of not having any properties reaching that point in terms of the amount owed, so you have some sense that you're gonna get made whole with all of them. We have a couple that are, you know, we may be, it may be time to think, maybe it isn't gonna work out that way, but...
All right, well, let's make that a homework item. You know, think about it, you know, put your thoughts and ideas down on paper, so we can talk about them at a future meeting, next meeting, a meeting after, whenever. We'll set some time to discuss the topic, and then we'll decide then if we need to codify a policy or not, or just keep doing what we're doing.
Do other towns have stated policies around that?
Some do, yeah. Yeah, the ones that I've seen, I haven't gone chasing a bunch, but the ones that I've seen that have policies are, I think, more on the aggressive end of the spectrum.
Okay.
Where, you know, this is what we do, and it's kind of on autopilot in a lot of places.
Okay.
You know, it hits, it hits an amount. It's not a big amount, it's not a, the places that are aggressive about are very aggressive.
Okay. I don't know whether I wanna see us get very aggressive about it.
No, I wouldn't wanna be in that business, so. Okay.
That was the end of my list.
Okay.
Can we, can we get an update, Chris? And you and I talked about this, is, I think, like, two years ago, we gave Romeo Gane a tax break, a tax credit for renovations of the barn.
The barn, yeah.
Can we just get an update from him?
Yep.
On where that's at?
Yeah, we dug that paperwork out. I haven't talked to him yet.
Okay, that would be great, if you could just do that.
Were there any others? It was just him, right?
It was just him.
That's the only barn preservation easement you've granted, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Chris? Other topics? No? No, okay. All right. So does anybody think we need to have any more discussion on board priorities? I think we hashed that out in our...
Yeah, I think that's...
In our action items segment. Okay, that's settled. All right. So it is just after seven, and it looks like we have Tom here. Oh, Dee.
I'm not Tom.
Aw, come on, Dee.
Tonight, please.
So come on down.
I'm Tom Duffy, 28, Patakaway Shores. Good evening. I'm here as the president of the Patakaway Lake Improvement Association. And Dee Decker is here. She runs our Lakehost program, and does all of the, does more than just the administration for it. She also gets the, applies for the funds. She processes the paperwork that the state requires in order for us to keep getting their funds. And, you know, we've been doing this for some time. We used to have a warrant article that was just dedicated to Patakaway. I think that got expanded a few years ago to cover all the issues in the category. And so we're here to formally, not just talk about the request for the $5,000 that we made, but also, I'd like to, I haven't been Lake Association president for a while, and I just became association president again. And I used to meet with the board every couple of years just to kind of bring you up to speed on what we were doing and what we do. Because I think it's, sometimes it's lost, and there are two people here that have been very active in the association, so they know what's going on, but usually. But the involvement that we've had with the town over a longer period of town, I think time is really important, because we have this absolutely incredible resource in the town, Patakaway Lake and State Park. And I know that our services are actually responsible, as far as I can tell, watching the emergency vehicles go up mountain road and rescuing people and so forth. And they also use certain access points that are within some of the subdivisions in order to be able to, I remember Johnny Fernal coming down with a boat once to put out a fire on an island, and he had a gas pumper, and I think they still have them, you know, they're pretty powerful, and just for rescues and so forth. And that happens in the winter as well, by the way. You know, you have snowmobile people trying to skim their way across the lake or something. So, you know, there's that kind of activity, you know, that is there. We also have a section of the road that White's Grove has a section of the road, and then PLIA has a section of Route 156, which is, of course, state-owned. But it's sort of a gateway from the south side into Nottingham, so it's good that we pick up the trash once in a while. And in the past, we haven't done it in the last few years, but I know when Donna Danus was active and with Elizabeth in the school, I think the year before that, and then that year, but we have, the fifth grade has come out a few times with us. They have a field day, and we give them an ecological briefing of Patakaway, and we take them out on the boats with life preservers, and we show them water testing. And we also show them that the lake is alive by showing them magnified glasses with critters in it and so forth. It's really an important resource. We certainly derive, we all know that we derive some very good tax revenue from the more valuable properties on the lake. And so it's important to keep the lake free of invasive species, to keep a watch out for dangerous algae blooms that may occur. Mostly, they're confined to the state park beach when they occur, because, well, swimming your own risk. But it's not because nobody's paying attention, it's because we have a large Weed Watchers group. And I have to say that the activity of the Lakehosts has really been a vital part, not in identifying the bad characters, plant characters and invasives, because there's also species that come in, zebra mussels and so forth, and removing them from the boats. So we man both the Fundy launch and also the state park launch on Horace Island. In fact, tonight in the audience, Steve Sauraf, who's been taking notes, I guess, for the forum, is also in charge of Weed Watchers, and he holds regular trainings, as does Dee, to train, because we train volunteers. In addition to the money that the town provides, and the money that the PLIA provides, and the money that the state provides, we also have matching, we get the money because we have matching volunteer hours. And so it's not just about the money, it's about participation. So I wanted to just provide that overview, just to give you a sense that we contribute to that conservation effort in ways that are sometimes unseen. So I just thought I'd tell you about that and see if we can get some money.
So Dee Decker, 11 Lakeview Drive, program coordinator and assistant manager for the program. So this year's grant from the DES was actually up from the previous years by $100. So it was $5,050 rather than $4,950. We are, at this time, requesting $6,000 from the town.
Oh, $6,000.
From the town.
That was on last year.
And matching $6,000 from the PLIA to be sent to New Hampshire Lakes to help cover the PLIA, the Lakehost payroll. My budget says we're gonna be requesting $7,000, and that's what I talked about at town meeting, was $7,000. But what we've done in the past is kind of, you know, look at the scheduling and everything, okay, this is how much we think that we're gonna need, and then based on weather and rain and other scheduling changes, you know, what do we have mid-August that we then need to add to, or don't need to add to, to get us through till Columbus Day? And so that's why, at this point, we're requesting the $6,000, and I've also sent the request to the PLIA for $6,000. We did have $1,250, I had my column in the wrong place, left over from last year. And the reason that there was money left over from last year was because last year was the first year that we, as a, an association, were required to do all the data entry for all of the ramp sheets. And it was, for us, an overwhelming task. They needed to be done by the end of October. I finished them the week before town meeting. So the time that I spent from the end of October to town meeting doing them, all became volunteer hours. I couldn't access that money to pay myself. It's the only thing I get paid for. And part of the reason we get so behind is, one, we are now four weeks into, we just finished our second pay period, four weeks into the season, and I don't have the database sent to me yet from New Hampshire Lakes to start inputting the information. So I'm already a month behind. And that is just a function of, New Hampshire Lakes has one full-time person and one half-time person trying to handle the whole program, and Crystal frankly gets very overwhelmed, because everything has to be done in a very short period of time, once everything's ready. I do have an assistant myself this year who's gonna help me with doing the data entry, so we will be on top of it. But we kind of like started out a little bit of a disadvantage, because we're, number one, this task has been pushed down to us, to the local level, and because we're behind April, because we can't get started right away. So we, you know, you know, that's part of it. The other thing is that last Sunday, the Sunday of Memorial Day, they inspected over 200 boats at Fundy. The average boat ramp in New Hampshire inspects less than 20. So the number of boats that we inspect up at Fundy is enormous compared to the average other boat ramp. So we are the, either the number one or the number two, keeps fluctuating back and forth, busiest boat ramp in the state. And that's, you know, it puts...
It's a lot of data to input.
It puts a lot of pressure on us. It really does. So this year, for hours scheduled, I've only increased the number of hours in the schedule for Lakehost by 200. That is to cover the State Park. We know that the State Park is our weak spot, and so we are staffing the State Park Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday with a paid host from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Earlier than that and later than that, we're using volunteers, and we've already had volunteers up there. We've had volunteers at Fundy at 4:30 in the morning to cover the fishing tournaments. So we do use a lot of volunteer hours. The other thing that's impacting our budget this year is the job market. And so we had to increase what we're paying our hosts in order to get hosts, number one, to come back. We had four come back this year, and then we had two new ones. Some of the ones that I interviewed, especially like the UNH students, are like, "Well, I can go to Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's and make $15." Like, well, if that's what you gotta do, I'm, you know, then that's what you gotta do. You know, I can afford to pay $10.50 to $11 an hour. That's what we can afford to do. So our average this year is $11 an hour. We have some that are a little bit less, and then some of the, like Kathy, who's been with us for years, years is a little bit higher. So we are staffing the Fundy launch from Memorial Day to Labor Day, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM with paid hosts. Before 7:00 AM and after 7:00 PM is volunteers. And then the State Park, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Right now, my schedule goes through September, because that is the priority. One of the nice things that Crystal has done for us through this database that we're putting the data in, is everything is done in time blocks, and because it's done in time blocks, I can see where to do the majority of our scheduling. And one of the things that we found was that September to October, while it is busy, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday morning, not busy. Doesn't make any sense to have somebody staffed there, because basically, nobody's going in. So we got a lot of that data out of the data entry that I did last year. So that's helping our staffing quite a bit. The other thing that's impacting, unfortunately, our payroll this year, is I was very excited to learn that Crystal had worked on an app, so that the Lakehost were gonna be able to have an app that they can use offline to input the data for the boats. So they could keep it on the paper boat sheets, and then during downtime, input the data, and then that would, you know, save us from having to do it later, because they had downtime, they're already getting paid, everything, you know, great. Sadly, that didn't work, because we do so many, we had to choose either the database or the app. We couldn't do a combination of the two. And because I, we can't physically do 200 boats, doing it through an app offline and then uploading it later, we had to choose just the way we did it last year, which means their downtime is not gonna be used, which they have during the week, on the weekends, they have no downtime. They're lucky to go to the bathroom. So anyway, so I was a little disappointed in that. Hopefully, we can tweak it a little bit better next year, so that we can do some of that, but that's going to change things a little bit this year, too. The new question on the tracking sheet is about ballast tanks. I think ballast tanks are important for you guys to know about. There are a number of boats, if you go out onto any lake, that create these enormous wakes, and people are actually surfing off of it. They're not, they're not like attached to the boat by a rope or anything, they're physically surfing.
They weigh down the back.
And what they're doing is they're going into the water, they're using a pump to fill these tanks or these bags on the boat to create weight in the back, so that when they, so that when they move, it creates these much bigger wakes. DES and New Hampshire Lakes is very concerned about these because of the issue with shoreline erosion that these are creating, because it's, we're a narrow lake, and they come close to the side of the lake, and so it's creating erosion. But then also, if they're in a shallow area, and it's pushing the back of the boat down deeper, where it can actually start cutting off and getting into some of the weeds and stuff like that, and that can cause invasives to spread. So that's the new tracking question that we're, they're working on this year.
Is that a yes/no question? Is this boat equipped with ballast tanks?
Yeah, and it's only power boats. Yes, it's a yes/no. And we have four or five of them that live in the lake right now, so we have them on Patakaway, on our little bitty lake. And then the only other thing that I really wanted to make sure that you guys knew about before I take any questions, is the state legislature did pass an invasive species sticker that is for out-of-state power boats. I think they're still dickering over the dollar amount. Some have said it's gonna be $20, some have said it's gonna be $40. But basically, all of the money that's brought in from these power boats buying these invasive species stickers that they must put with, on the hulls of their boats, is directly going to go to invasive species control and the Lakehost program, so that we have more money hopefully in, down the road, because the grant keeps getting smaller and smaller from DES, so they were looking for a way to... and smaller from DES, so they were looking for a way to, you know, to build up because they're still trying to grow the program. There are many lakes in this state that does not have a Lake Coast program, so they're trying to, you know, find ways to do that. Some of the money from our current state registrations goes to the invasive species program already, but they're trying to, you know, to increase that since so many of our boats are from out of state. So that's what I've got for you. Any questions?
The invasive species sticker for the out-of-state boaters, if they don't purchase one, are they not allowed on the lake? Or how does that?
So that's a really good question. That, from what we have been told, how they're going to manage that hasn't really been figured out because we don't have anybody at the ramp where they can buy stickers. And we are not enforcers where there is educators, so that's, they were hoping to have us do that?
In Maine, you stop at one of the information places on the way up, right? And there's nobody who's going to police you. It's when you're on a lake, if a marine patrol sees you without it.
Right. So for example, the State Park might be our local spot, or Ben Franklin's or the Trading Post may be our local spot for people to go buy it. And it's sort of on the honor system like Donna's saying. One other interesting thing that I think I was told sort of indirectly is that the hour, this tracking information for how many boats are on the lake is impacting how marine patrol is staffing the lakes. Marine patrol's been on Patuckaway a lot lately. So I think they're using some of that cross-departmentally to figure out who needs to be staffed and when, so.
They're coming to address our annual meeting on Saturday at the State Park. We're going to hold it at the State Park. By the way, you're all invited, please come.
Oh, that's really nice, the State Park's letting you go there for free to do that?
They're charging us a hundred dollar administrative fee, but they waived their five hundred dollar pavilion fee.
Oh, good.
Something.
Yeah. All right, so I have some questions.
Sure.
And full disclosure, I used to run the program.
Yes, I took over from you.
I kind of gathered that.
So how have the volunteer hours for this program increased over the last three to five years?
Dramatically.
Do you have the data?
I don't have specific data, but on increases, however, I can certainly get that for you. I will tell you that our volunteer hours for last year alone were 355 hours.
Okay, so I'd like to see how that increases because here's my concern.
Okay.
My concern is that the number keeps going up every year. The number that you guys keep coming and asking the town for is going up. And in my mind, I want to make sure that the PLIA numbers are going up, both in dollars and in volunteer. I don't believe that the, I got to be honest, I don't believe that the town should be bearing an equal burden. I think that the PLIA and the PLIA members who live on the lake, who are taking advantage of it, should be stepping up as well. And I have a concern that we put ten thousand dollars in the fund this year, and you guys are coming in and asking for six and saying we may be back for seven. Because that's leaving us three in a fund where we're saying we want to build up this fund so that we have money in, you know, the event of a catastrophic invasion.
Are there other applications for that money?
It doesn't matter, no, Tom.
I'm just asking.
It was never intended that you guys should take 70% of what's being put away in a year.
No, well, we used to do our own one article, and I guess if we had to go back to that, you know, we may have to go back to it. I think it's a lot easier to do it the way we're doing it.
I understand, but that's not answering my questions.
No, and I will, I do not have that specific information, but as you know, New Hampshire Lakes keeps track of all of that information. And they send us an end-of-year report every year, and I can just pull those numbers off of.
That'd be great.
I've gotten those the last five years since I took over from you, so I should be able to get those numbers from you.
Okay, that's great. And then what your projection is for this year as well? Since you've got it defined in terms of people working before and after the, yeah, that would be great.
Yep.
I know last year, there was a thing about the new requirement that program administrators have to be paid. There was something like that, I know, which is kind of silly to me. But, so now you've got two, you called yourself a program assistant?
So that's, so they changed, I don't know why they keep doing this, they keep changing our title. So we are now considered program assistants.
So there's no local program manager anymore?
No, we're program assistants.
Okay, because they run the program and you guys are the assistants?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I'm the local point person and coordinator for the volunteer side.
Yeah.
And then the assistant for the paid side. So the paid side is like 5% max of my time. Everything else I do is volunteer.
Sure.
So, yes, I don't know why they keep changing it.
So with Ruth.
Yes.
Joining, are we, so now are we obligated to pay both assistants?
Yes. So what I did is I sat down and I figured out that how much time it took me last year to do all of the data entry and including what I did that I did not get paid for.
Yeah.
And I said, okay, in order for me to do this, if two of us sit down and do it together, it's the same amount of time, it's just two of us working on it at the same time.
So you took the fee that you have to pay and you split it between the two of you?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, we'll see how it, how it works out. We are going to do, set aside a time every week to input the data so that it's scheduled, and we'll sit down and do it together, and it's just scheduled and everything else like that. And when you're scheduling yourself with someone else, you're more likely to sit down and actually do it right then than if you're, oh, I can get to that later, so.
So what did we do last year? I know you guys came and I think you asked for six, and we said we'll give you the four and then come back.
Correct.
And then what happened? You came back and we ended up at six?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, to close, the 2018, we had about just over 20,000 in that fund, and town meeting added another 10,000, so your balance is just over 30, right?
Okay. And we never set, we never set like, what do we want that account to be at?
We didn't target.
We didn't target what we want it to be at.
So I will, so on that, Patuckaway is actually not on the list, the state list from DES of infested lakes, even though we do have milfoil. And the reason that we don't have that designation is because they feel that we have a good handle on controlling and managing the amount of milfoil that we have.
Because they've assumed that responsibility?
Because the state has assumed a lot of that responsibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And so as long as we can, through Neil and Steve and, you know, the whole, all of the people that are doing this together, keep a really good, solid, working relationship with DES and Amy and the divers, plus to have, we now have our own divers that can go in and do, you know, a lot of the mitigation and everything else like that. The longer we can do that, they know that this came in off the State Park, and they know that they bear a share of the responsibility. And typically, what happens is, you know, the first year, the state will help, after that, the town's on your own. So we are very lucky that we're going into summer four, I think, with very little spread and with the state bearing the majority of the cost of everything that's going on with trying to pull it out and everything else like that. So, you know, we're trying to foster.
We're something of a success story because most of the lakes that have it will never get rid of them. And we find it and we mitigate it. And there are times when we say, as far as we can observe, and that's with our snorkel team led by Neil, as well as the divers, we are, at this moment, as far as we can identify, milfoil-free, exotic milfoil-free. And then the next year comes and, oh, look at that. That will grow an inch a day in July. And so we don't want to see it even close to where it could be at a prop because that's where danger comes. And we've had the investigation team up in the Fundy, and miraculously, we have a, you stand on the Wolfborough dock someday and just take a look down in the dock, it looks like somebody has a Christmas tree for him underneath it. You certainly can't swim in it, so.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know that prevention is far less expensive than mediation.
Well, that was the whole idea for starting the fund.
I know, I know. No, I'm just saying, we are on the same page with that, absolutely. And so I will get that data for you.
Yeah, I mean, Dee, last year, we asked for you to bring like the budget, right? The estimated budget, remember?
Mm-hmm.
And I kind of thought you were going to bring that tonight, too. But my concern is, and trust me.
I have budget numbers right here with my hands scratched all over it. I can easily send that to you again.
Well, you had a really nice sheet breakdown last year that you sent to us, I think.
Oh, so the one that I, okay, so, yes, I have that from last year that I have not started this year because I haven't started collecting that data back from Crystal on where we are with those numbers, and most of that information came from Crystal. So I can get those to you.
Okay, okay.
I will continue to get those for you.
So my concern is that the requests of the town keeps going up and that we have this $10,000 that we've put into the fund, and I don't want us to continuously be creeping up and eating more of that because the intention was to make sure we had that kind of as a safety nut and to, safety net and to fund the program per year. And I want to be sure that the volunteerism on the lake is increasing as well because there's a lot of people on Patuckaway who don't do anything. And I, you know, I think it's.
I've noticed that.
Yeah.
But there's a lot more that do than there used to be.
That's probably true.
Weed watchers, the divers, the snorkelers.
But I just want to see those volunteer numbers going up at the same rate that the town is being asked to contribute to it.
If we could probably, Dee does a really great job at making the attempt to track it, as does Steve on weed watchers, as does Neil, but there's always more to do, and a lot of times, you just do it, you know, and you forgot to submit it.
Well, you have to track your hours for this for.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that there's a lot that often goes on, just like it does everywhere, your jobs.
I mean, John, I don't know if you have thoughts or if you want to argue against me on it, feel free to.
Well, I feel like the prevention, you know, it's, if something happens to the body of water, it's going to affect, you know, the water here. If the milfoil does get into Fundy, when how the state drains that dam, it's coming. And it's going to go all the way down, and the North River is a huge, you know, body of water that goes through the town. And it's going to get into these pockets, this area where we fish for the kids' fishing tournament. Once it gets loaded in there, there's nobody that's going to take it out. It's going to become a Deadpool. You know, prevention of what we're doing, you know, it's not really just about, I don't think, you know, focusing on, because of the people that live on the lake. You know, because, and I want to say something that's probably not going to be most politically correct, you know, some of the, but you know, our conservation committee, they get a portion of every sale that's current use land. They get their 10% to go and invest into the town. For a lot of the money they're investing, and again, I think they do a great job, this is not to be fixed, they're investing a lot of money into property that's just now sitting there, there's no, there's no recreational factor to it. The, I mean, people can go walk on it, but I'm sure more people use our town beach during the summer, you know, and that area could be infected. You know, people using their kayaks that come in from the town, they want to use access to the lake through the public launch. I mean, they people that want to hike it, you know, I mean, I just, I've always, you know, I mean, like everybody's spending money or something, but it's the fact that we are spending money to preserve a part of our town. You know, it's not, you know, it shouldn't be based on because of the people that live there or whatever. It's a use that anybody in this town can use at any single time. Just like if you conserved 100 acres over here and you made a walking trail, that's for everybody to use. You know, this body of water is for everybody in town that wants to use it. There's no limitation that says nobody can't use it. You can go swimming at the beach any day you want. You know, you can take your kayak down there, canoe, or if you have your own boat in town, you can use it. So we're really, it's not limited to just the people that live there. You know, and the people that do live there, I've seen over the past years of my contribution to the lake association, is, you know, the volunteer has arrived, you know, the road cleanup. We get more people do road cleanup than we probably ever have. You know, sometimes we can get 15, 20 people coming to that on a Saturday morning, which is huge. You wouldn't see that before. And even our annual meetings over the past couple of years, they have grown. More people are attending, more people are being involved. You know, with the projects that they're doing with the cleanups and the dedication they have with the snorkeling to pick the milfoil, there's a lot of volunteer hours. And I know there's a lot more that's going to be undocumented just because people are out, you know, the residents are out trying to take care of it. You know, I think it's, you know, obviously, if you know, the more we get, the more money, maybe down the road, the less money we'll have to, the PLIA might have to come to ask, you know, for funding. But it's something at the stage of where we're in to have an 800-acre lake that is basically almost milfoil-free in southern New Hampshire. You go look it up, there ain't very many. Every place has it but us. So if we stop contributing or stop helping and try to rely on that one thing, and again, the money of the 6,000, 5,000 to protect an 800-acre resource that is useful for everybody in town, I don't think it's a lot of money to put in. And that's my take.
Here's what I'd like to propose, and I'll put it in form of a motion if you need it after I explain it, but if we look at $5,000 coming from the New Hampshire Lakes covering the first six weeks of payroll, if you, I know it's not going to be exact, right?
No, I understand where you're going.
Yeah, but if you estimate, if you say $5,000 is going to cover roughly six weeks of payroll, so if we said, okay, $5,000 from New Hampshire Lakes is going to cover six weeks, if we say, yeah, let's approve $5,000 tonight, that should give you 12 weeks, and then $5,000 from the PLIA should give you 18 weeks. I know it's not going to be perfect, but what I would suggest is that we approve $5,000 tonight, have Dee come back, like, I don't know, we did it like August last year, let's see where we're at, and then let's determine if it makes sense to give more out of that fund. So that's my recommendation.
That's along the lines of what we did last year anyways.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Same thing. Only last year, it was four and two. It was four and two.
I don't have it.
Yeah, it was four and two.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Because four was the base kind of that we were starting from. So it's $1,000 more at this point, this year.
Thoughts? I'm a data-driven kind of person, so I would like to see the numbers in regards to what Donna was saying earlier, the budget, hours, all that other stuff. Because I'm on the same mindset with you, Donna.
So I think it's hard, like, it's hard to, so she has last year's data. The program hasn't been running enough, long enough this year to have real data yet. She can have a projection, right? But different things are going to influence it, like weather.
No, I get that.
So that's why I'm kind of like, yeah, I mean, certainly you must have a projection that you can provide.
Those were the numbers that I gave you, yeah.
But, but yeah, that's kind of why I'm like, let's give some now, and then let's have the, kind of the data, where are we come August? So, yeah, same with me, it's like the data, but.
And we have last year's data, and this year's data, we can review again in August.
Now that the.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that, I mean, other than what's put on here, I'd like to have a packet be presented so we can actually see the whole picture and make a more informed, educated decision.
So what would you want to see in that package?
Same thing she brought last year. And in looking at the numbers that she brought last year, you saw that she had forgotten to factor in the money that was left over, right? And so that wasn't in the math of how much was needed. And I mean, that was just an honest mistake, but that's what, when you see the math laid out that way, that's what helps you have, you know, conversation from the same point of data, right? So.
And every summer is different because every summer's weather is different.
Exactly.
And as I said, payroll, having, costs are different this year compared to last year.
What did the rate go up to?
My concern, hang on just a second, let me finish this thought, is we cannot deficit spend. If we run out of money, we don't get our grant next year. And that is a major concern, is that is we will, we forfeit next year's grant money if we deficit spend.
So making a. So making a $1,000 difference at this point in time is gonna.
Hang on, hang on. So what we had to do previously is run a check to Concord so that we didn't run into that situation. I think that managing the numbers last year, the way that we did compared to the year previous to that, which is the year that we did run into that situation, certainly made it a lot clearer on a payroll, the payroll cycle is every two weeks. We just started a new payroll cycle today. Managing that every two weeks the way that I did last year makes it much clearer. So my only request will be is if we, if all of a sudden I see in the middle of July, it's been hot, it's been sunny, we have not had any rain, we're going through funds faster than even I anticipated, my being able to send you guys an email and say, hey, this is where we're at right now, here, email you the sheets with all the data, here's where we're at, and this is what, you know, can I, can can we come earlier than the middle of August? Or, you know, is is it, we're gonna do this in the middle of August?
Well, so I think the incident that you're referring to two years ago was an unusual situation.
Well, it was the it was the first year things really changed. So it was, there were a bunch of things that happened.
There were vacation.
I don't want to go back and revisit that, all of that stuff.
Yeah.
But my, so I liked what we did last year with the way things were tightened up with tracking and everything.
Yeah.
My only request is is if we get to the point where it's like, we're not gonna make it to the middle of August, and I can see that from the data that I have, requesting to come and see you guys sooner.
Yeah, I I think that's fine.
If your operational reality changes to that extent, definitely bring it forward, bring the data and play it out for us.
But keep in perspective that we're still saying we're gonna give you $1,000 more at this point in time.
No, no, yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah.
Yeah.
But and oh, and then to answer your question, so average, Lake Coast last year made $10 an hour.
Okay.
Average Lake Coast this year makes $11 an hour.
Okay. Has the New Hampshire lakes increased the rate that they apply to volunteer hours as well?
Yes.
Okay, good.
By almost a dollar an hour.
Okay, good.
Yes. It's 20, it's almost $25 an hour now.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Which is required for the matching.
Which is, right, right, right.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. So, but yeah, no, that's, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
Do you need a motion?
Any other, well, thoughts or questions or are we gonna go to a motion?
Well, I just want to put a thought out there. I I know last year we split it, you know, have them come back. Rather than revisit this again, what do, why not just give them the whole thing and it's like, this is all you need.
Because I think now that this is part of a fund, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to town to make sure that the money is being spent in the right way. And, you know, if it comes in that maybe they don't need it, maybe they're on track because there's been, you know, the cold, you know, cold wet spell. I don't want the money sitting out there with New Hampshire lakes or the PLIA. I want it sitting in our fund.
Fair enough, yeah. All right. Fair enough.
Now, and, but just so that you understand, because and I know Donna knows this already, if we get to the point that there is money left there, we always have the option of asking to have it sent back to, you know, if there's $1,000 and we've both, you know, both groups have put in $5,000, you know, send 5,000, 500 back to the town, and you guys can, I assume, put it back in your fund at that point, and then we can put it back in our coffers as well. So there there is that, you know.
I thought they carried it over. I didn't think they sent it back. I thought they carried it over.
So there was a change either last year or the year before that that you were given the option of leaving it or not?
Because that was my concern was two years ago, we sat, we left 200, $2,000 just sitting with them.
Yeah.
And it got carried to the next year, but it just sat there.
And I assume it doesn't collect interest while it's.
It does not.
So I'd rather have it sitting in our fund and give it out when when it's needed.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Refund.
Yeah.
So you're making a proposal for 5,000 tonight?
Mm-hmm.
You guys got an opinion on that?
Yeah, the opinion is, is that, you know, we know that that based on what we've seen and be based on the budget, that we're gonna need more. And, you know, maybe, you know, I I don't see any miraculous way the money shows up other than to continue doing the matching that we're doing. And, you know, as the as the number goes up, the PLA contribution goes up as well. It's the it's the state that has a limited allocation and a lot of that money is, comes from federal, I think. Some of it comes from federal, from the feds. So they're more limited than we are in the sense that if we have to raise more money, then we do it. I think the bigger question is, you want us to do this, right?
Don't be ridiculous, Tom.
Okay, well, then then help us make, help us do it in a way that makes it easy. I mean, we can spend a lot of time accounting and we can spend a lot of time accumulating the data because I realize that it justifies it, but we're out there, you know, actually inspecting boats. Come on out sometime, come on out to the to the ramp, see how it's done. It's pretty interesting. I mean, it's it's real community action.
Any other thoughts or questions? Word to ear, Tom? I'm good now? Good with it?
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the PLIA $5,000 to support the 2019 Lake Coast program with the understanding that the PLIA will come back in August or sooner if needed to give us an update and assess where we are with investment in the program.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
No discussion.
For discussion?
I think we should give the six. But I'm good. Just want to state that.
Okay.
Well, don't forget, they said they might be coming back for seven anyway.
I understand.
So what's the difference if you come back for one or two, right?
I'm just just making a statement. I'm making my statement.
Right? Exactly. So.
I'm glad you said it, not me.
Yeah.
Because that was exactly my thought. I'm like, I'm probably coming back anyway. Chances are.
All right. So let's do this again. Motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, as always, for.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our public agenda. We do have some items to bring into non-public session.
Oh, we do.
The entire public will now leave.
Thanks for coming public.
And once the non-public session is closed, we will be done for the night.
I haven't had an opportunity to welcome Lorraine as our minutes taker, so welcome. I was not here in the last meeting. If you were here, I apologize, but.
I I welcomed her last.